Ready to call this regular school board meeting to order?
Hmm.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
You have genes that lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First hearing of the public.
Hello, I'm Bobby Surgeon. Some of you know me. I know that the dynamics of the district have changed, but there's a couple of things that I've just found out about recently as a community, as a concerned community citizen, which hopefully some of you will become advocates about. I just got the information on the new standards-based grading. I think this is the most ridiculous information that I have started to read in my entire life. I mean, where, who decided on this? Was this our new administration? I'm assuming?
Yeah.
It wasn't us.
It wasn't us.
I mean, have any of you seen this, read this?
Unfortunately, yes.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, this was the teacher training, this packet right here. There was no formal meeting for the teachers.
No training?
None, none. This packet right here that I'm holding in my hand, I guess I'm now qualified to be a teacher in Lorraine City Schools, once I read this packet and finish it. That's the craziest thing I've ever heard of, and I will go to the next town hall meeting and address this issue. It's crazy. I mean, some of the things here, "Performance level descriptors", "Foundational points", "Levels four and five are not intended to be, to be an overly exhaustive or impossible process", "It is an opportunity for a scholar to demonstrate advanced mastery". Who's deciding on what the advanced mastery is? Is there a format for the advanced mastery? All of you hopefully are as dumbfounded at this as I am.
Yes.
I mean, it's the craziest thing. Let's see, another one into that same category. "The scale should focus on quality of work, not measurements of quantity. Statements of quantity for an outcome, such as with an 80% accuracy, or identified three out of four, are not appropriate." How are we measuring that they know that, the information? What happened to, you know, you build up, obviously, quizzes. You do a certain amount of work. You take a quiz with 10 questions. You get 10 out of 10, you got 100. You get 5 out of 10, you got 50%. These are the craziest descriptions for teachers to be grading students on. I've never seen anything so ludicrous in my whole life. And I'm being really nice about this, as to what I really think about this. Let me see, one other thing here that I, that stuck out that I just want to bring to highlight here real quick. Homework policy. Homework is never given to scholars so they can learn the material the first time around. Solid learning should be achieved before the first homework assignment is uttered. Why would you put the word uttered in a professional packet of information? But should not be uttered. Homework is given in order for scholars to practice, reinforce, and extend what they already know. I think that's pretty common sense as to what teachers do anyway. I don't think teachers are just giving out work that's never been covered. I just, I'm amazed at how far I've gotten in this, and how ridiculous it is. Also, with seventh and eighth graders, this is how they're being measured. So they're not going to go into ninth grade next, or, you know, this year's eighth graders, next year's ninth graders, two years from now, ninth graders. They're not going to have a GPA. Have you ever heard of anything? I would love to find another district in the country that's doing this, because I'll tell them they're crazy as well. This is nuts. Freshmen next year will not have a GPA with this method. They're based on a 1 through 5. That's what they're going to be, they're going to have points.
Actually, 1 through 3.
Well, right.
As I found out as a parent when I went to conferences, it was a complete waste of my time when a teacher handed me some one-pager and says, "This is all the training we got on standardized grading, and your child has 3s all the way across."
Right.
He's on track. I'm like...
Right. And 4 and 5 is-
Because they're not allowed to give 4 and 5.
Right. But again, the 4 and 5 is supposed to be like advanced levels.
Right.
But who's going to determine what those advanced levels are? What material makes up those advanced levels? Absolute craziness. Crazy. And all of you as board members should be going to the press, and hopefully somebody's here to hear this, but probably not, and maybe I'll give them a call tomorrow myself. The other thing is, is I've heard recently about the shared attribution, which I don't know a whole lot about. But from the way it sounded is that, right now, Larkmore is our best performing school with a C on the state test, but because you have other buildings that are an F, everybody's going to be considered an F. No, no, that's not right. So, I guess, you know, if we were all in a classroom, if some of us are getting As and one of us is getting an F, we all get an F then? I mean, is that, is that what shared attribution is about? Where's the goal for the good kids to continue striving and doing well, or the good teachers and the good administrators to keep doing well? You know, Larkmore should be looked at as, what are they doing that they're the best building in our district? You know, what are their administrators doing? What are their teachers doing that their students are performing better than buildings, than students in other buildings? You know, why are we not asking them? You know, and I know it's some of your guys' fault, but why were some of those administrators from Larkmore not brought back last year? They kept their principal, but they have two brand-new deans. Why would you change what's working? Maybe they could have continued to rise up to a B or an A. It makes no sense whatsoever. So, hopefully the dynamics, I've heard that there's hopefully some changes, that the board will be regaining some power, you know, hopefully these lawsuits that are happening will help. But, I mean, it's just crazy. You know, I don't have kids. I'm a concerned citizen who cares about these kids in this city, because what goes on in this district does affect me as a citizen. It affects all of us. The people who say, "Well, I don't have kids", what goes on in this district still affects you. It affects your homeownership value, it affects you, your safety, everything. So I just think more people need to be involved, you know, and, you know, this, we all ultimately know that the goal is to make this a charter school system. Anybody who thinks that charter schools is going to turn around the performance of students in our district, a for-profit company, no it's not. It's not going to make any difference. It'll only be worse. And I have friends who put their kids in those charter school system, and those kids are not performing any better than the children in this district. And to be honest, the kids in this district are performing better than the kids in the charter school systems, because those charter schools are not held to the accountability that Lorraine City Schools is held to, with those state standardized tests and all that. And we all know that the state keeps changing the game. They keep changing the grading method and the performance evaluations, you know. It's like you're chasing something that you can never get. So, I don't know how much you, I'm sure all of you have followed this, I don't know if you all have followed this, but that's, that's the system that we're working within, you know, and we have to fight to change what has been put in place. And there is some responsibility on Lorraine that we got to where we're at, and we have to change it.
Are you saying that people that you just showed us, no one was given a workshop to explain?
No.
How that flows into the system?
No.
And then flows into the junior high, and then to the high school?
No. Teachers were given this right here. That's it.
The turnaround time was?
Little to none.
It wasn't rolled out very well.
It was rolled out horribly.
This was handed out during that, during that week that they had their professional development, and some, I mean, from what I was told, it was the last afternoon, the last afternoon, in the, in the last part of latter, of the afternoon, this was presented to them, and that's how it was considered rolled out, something like that. You could have took six months to roll out, something like that.
Oh, this entire school year?
If you did it, if you did it properly.
First off, if you're not prepared to roll something like that out before the school year starts, then don't roll it out.
Right.
You know, rolling it out a month and a half into the school year is ridiculous, and without training anybody or educating them on the standard-based scale.
That wasn't even-
This was one of those things where, again, I think we talked about in one of our board meetings, that the administration gave the teachers a directive to delete their grades-
Yes.
-from the system. And this is-
Yes.
You're going to all give every student between a 1 and a 3, and no higher than, no 4s or 5s.
Yes.
And the only comments you're going to give are, "On task" or "Not on task".
That is what I asked about. Who gets the 4 or 5, and why are we waiting for the 4 or 5 to be delivered?
Well, and how are the 4 and 5s, how is it decided how those are delivered? What is the work? What is the basis for getting that? Is it consistent across the board that there's the same tasks for all students?
It's just one big experiment.
Yeah, and you have, but again, you have teachers who are still fumbling, trying to figure out how to, how to work this and navigate this. They're, they're not all prepared. Like Tony said, he went to conferences, you know, he dealt with teachers that, they're still not, they're unsure. They've been left hanging. And, and the teacher looks bad in front of a parent like him, or some of my friends who have children in the district. The teachers are left looking like idiots, like they don't know what they're doing or talking about.
I think that's intentional.
Well, of course.
A parent shared with me actually today, that they were at a, it was a, some kind of a meeting with the principal board, the people with administration in the building, and they're talking about it, and they're trying to explain it, and she says, "You keep doing all", because they don't even, there's a lack of clarity understanding across the board, so you don't get, there's no elevator speech that's consistent. If you talk to different teachers, any that I've spoken with or communicated with me, none of them are satisfied with it. Some of them are far less confident, or have far less facility in utilizing it than others. But I've spoken to no one who's, who feels like they actually understand it and master it. So it's one of those things where they have to, they have to be way ahead of us. They're the ones who have to put the grades down. As, as a board member, I never have to ever experience that. The only confidence that we have is that all of the practitioners have competence in it, understanding and mastery of it, because again, we've been using a certain grading system forever, so there's a, and this is one of those that got rolled out in a way that the folks who had to actually implement it didn't know it. I guess anytime there's, in the letter that I read, anytime during the school year, that that letter has to be sent out, that's a red flag right there. When you have to tell teachers to delete these grades, that tells you there was either a lack of information shared or a lack of planning, because no one would ever plan in week whatever it was to send out that correspondence. So, at best, and, and here's what's really bad, because we didn't design this, this system.
Right.
This grading system maybe could be effective. We've done it in injustice, because we've been very inefficient in even how we rolled it out. It's not even fair to whoever designed this thing, because I'm sure, we can argue about, we've, our district has switched a lot of curriculum pieces. But in this instance, if this thing had any merit, I don't know that it does or doesn't, I'm not a researcher, but if it had any merit, our folks didn't have an opportunity to experience the upside of it because of how it was done. We can't even get into what it is, because it's been put out so poorly, that an indictment on what it is, we don't even know. We don't know if this could have been an effective way of grading, I don't know. I don't know what districts use it, I don't know. Somebody's done some research and they've created it, but our folks didn't have a fighting chance of making it work.
Right. Well, and the rollout. The rollout was not a month before. That teacher professional development thing was like-
During.
-a week or a week and a half-
Yeah.
-before the kids got into the buildings. I mean, this was literally dumped on them-
It was like, it was like, the week, the week before.
Right, like a week. To me, that's, no, that's not an ample rollout.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it was in the afternoon on the last day.
Right.
It's when, and like you said, that packet got handed to them, and, and I think you'll find that a lot of these things are used in charter schools, that they're, that they are-
Right.
They are rolled out, like the, like that, I've never seen another high school with a dean in it, and the deans, and the different layers there, except for in Cleveland, the charter schools they have.
Right.
You mean the ones that are failing?
Right. Well, and the other reason that I wanted to bring all this up, is because, you know, I have friends who are teachers. I have friends who put their heart and soul into this district. They love their kids, they will do anything they can to help their students, you know, and I, I'm so sick and tired of this lack of respect for teachers. You know, these are college-educated professionals, you know. I mean, they take so many tests to be certified. You know, not only do they pay for their bachelor's degree, you know, they take a whole slew of tests and pay for every one of these tests to be certified out of their pocket. It's not included in the cost of a college education. And just the lack of respect for educated professionals, like they don't know what they're doing, is just, I'm at my wit's end with that. And I feel so bad for them. I know I certainly wouldn't want to show up every day with that culture and mentality. It would, it would wear on you so bad, you know. So I just wanted to bring those points up, because I think there are things that really need to be looked at, and really need to be addressed. Like I said, I know the board is limited, but I will be going to the town hall to address some of these same issues. This and the, and the shared attribution, I just think are crazy.
I think you should, should look into the shared attribution, because I, I think, I think you need to know a little bit more, more about it, and how it was, it was rolled out more towards the teachers. The teachers are taking shared, shared attribution.
Right.
That's what, if I could interject.
Please.
The shared attribution is what, any school district has the ability of utilizing shared attribution.
Right.
And according to Ohio Department of Education, shared attribution is used for the evaluation of educators in a public school system, okay? So you don't have to use it, but you can use it.
Right.
Ohio Department of Education's recommendation for shared attribution is using only 10% of it as an evaluator, okay? This school district is 50%, which is astronomical, number one.
Right.
The two components of the shared attribution, half of it's based on performance evaluation, and then the other 50% is based on graduation rate and attendance. Two things that teachers have no control over.
None, not announced.
So why are we taking 50% of their evaluation and basing it off of two factors that they have no control over?
None.
Because again, it is an effort, and, and again, a lot of the things that I've seen has just been a blatant attack on our educators in here. We've expelled more teachers in this school district than we have students this school year.
That's crazy.
Which is remarkable in itself, and, you know, I know I sent a couple of emails about the latest, which was a math teacher that got escorted out with police because they accused him of doing something that he didn't do, and of course, he now has an attorney. I mean, just, it's remarkable that their, their blatant intentional efforts to make these people look bad is what they're doing.
Right.
And it's, it's very troublesome, and it is wearing on all the teachers as I hear them complaining.
Well, like I said, like I said, such a lack, such a lack of respect, not an ounce of respect for what they're doing in that classroom every single day as a, as a college-educated professional.
Absolutely.
So, all right, thank you.
Very unfortunate.
It is.
Big day tomorrow.
Extremely.
Get to the polls.
Huge. Early voted.
To add what he said, it sounds like our teachers, if you have a poor lack of knowledge and a poor grasp of knowledge, you experience such a high level of compassion fatigue that it is difficult to do a good job. So you come immediately into a classroom with a level of anxiety that's almost impossible, for the students don't even feel that.
Best way to describe it is it's bullying at its finest.
It's control confusion.
Yeah.
It's certainly not the atmosphere you would want to-
No.
-want to create for a school system.
I'm just surprised, I thought, this was my idea. And I, I'm sorry that I was wrong. I thought by putting the deans in, that you would have people there that were an automatic guidance counselor for the teachers, that would help them with whatever difficulties they had with the flow of the new information in the new curriculum, so that they could do a better job. I thought that was the purpose of them being there, and not really as a, as an administrator, you know, not doing this. I thought that they were here to clarify, to help, to give guidance, to make them feel like they had another arm of information that they could go to and say, "I don't do this well, and I need, I need more help over here", and it wouldn't be counted against me. So don't tell me I don't have classroom control. If you were trying to control the same students, you couldn't do it either, and teach that new information. Because if I don't understand it, I can't deliver it.
This thing to do is, it's probably impossible, is to be able to survey, interview the folks who were there in an anonymous way, where they could really say, "This is what I think about this." That's not going to happen. We get feedback, and folks are even scared to give us feedback. You know, they're scared that if somebody finds out that they're, that's the, that's the atmosphere that's created. It's hostile, it's, it has elements of bullying, and, and I'm reporting this as what people tell me. I'm not making up the, the environment, or the descriptions of the environment. This is what's being reported. And if it's not true, there's a lot of folks who believe that it's true, and that's what they feel. That's what they feel they're working. And that, and it's not getting any better, it's getting worse. And it's, so again, and the reality of this stuff is you can't keep this contained. You can spin all the stuff you want to spin, but it's, it's hard to contain reality.
My name is Barbie Washington. I live on Riverside Drive. I was going to try to wait till the second hearing, but thank you for speaking up. I'm hearing the same things you're hearing. My child doesn't, my child is in high school, so we thankfully don't have to deal with standards-based grading, although Mr. Hardy said at the last town hall that they are considering putting it into the high school, which is really terrifying, considering they don't have it, not even an ounce of a handle on it at the elementary school. Speaking with Mr. Williams, how he was just saying, they're afraid, teachers are afraid to talk. I started this little group called It Takes a Village, and we started talking to teachers, administrators. No disrespect, Mr. Demakia, but I wanted everything that you were saying to be false. And the more we're looking into things, I'm talking to teachers that I don't personally know, my children have never had, I sent questions to some of them, my anxiety, I'm sorry, last night, asking, "What can be done to help teacher morale, and what can be done to help our students start to succeed?" And some of them were text messages, some of them were emails, and they came fast. They didn't have to think about it, they have a list. And some of them are simple, "Supporting teachers. Train us on things that you guys expect us to do." I'm not on anyone's side. I want the children to succeed. I have my last child in high school. She can go, she'll be done this year with her high school credit, so she can attend the high school, the college next year, but I'm concerned for our community. I know I probably have more to say, but I'm waiting to hear some of these. I would like to know if we got answers for the enrollment. I think that that's it for now. I hope that we're, our, our goal is to get more parents involved, so the parents will step up and hold those in charge accountable, and hopefully make some changes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve or amend and sign the minutes for the meeting held October 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Of state.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Any old business?
It's kind of old business. I brought this up a little earlier, since it has to do with this credit card stuff. So we have the Capitol Conference coming up, and in the past, there were, there are credit cards assigned to board members. They, they would be able to utilize on trips such as this. And then last year, it was changed. And we were told that the credit card policy had changed with the district, and that credit cards were not being issued to people. And I know some places, they keep the credit cards, and then when the event comes up, they issue them. So one is, we were told, and I remember pretty clearly, that the policy in the district had changed, and individuals did not have credit cards. But I understand that some individuals in the district do have credit cards and access, so there wasn't a real policy change. It seems like it was more of a, how would you describe it?
We did tone back on credit cards.
Tone back. Josh, give us some real, clear, objective truth to this piece.
It was put out that he was supposed, that Mr. Hardy did not want credit card usage. So that's, the credit cards were toned back in regards to who had them, now that there are people that still have credit cards.
So, so credit cards, the CEO decided that he didn't want credit cards being used?
As often, yes. I'm just trying to-
It kind of speaks for itself.
So then you have to go to Columbus and go to every hotel.
You don't have to be a rock star to figure it out.
I'm just going to-
And check board members.
Does my credit card server, or they canceled that?
It's probably canceled.
Oh, so they canceled our credit cards.
Excuse me, too.
There was a lot of-
Some of the people don't understand that it's a conference, and what you're referring to.
Oh, the Capitol Conference is a, it's in Columbus, it's sponsored by the Ohio School Board Association, and it's the big conference that administrators, teachers, board members go through once a year at the state in Columbus, and that's where you get all the workshops and all the training. There are certain things that we might have to attend, especially as a new board member, on certain protocols. Some things the treasurer has to attend on our behalf, so the district has certain information.
Voting for the delegates.
It's the, it is the premier professional conference for educators in the state of Ohio. And so our district probably sends, our board goes, there are a number of administrators. Sometimes our students participate, like our robotics club was there in one of the exhibits. So it's a big trade show, big learning, people go, they get CEOs, all kinds of things occur. And it happens once a year. It's usually the second week in November every year. And so we've been attending this, and again, so, and it's paid for by the district. We do a set aside of $20,000 at the beginning of the year, roughly, to cover any board expenses. So it's already been, you know, our expenses have already been allocated for it. But again, when you go and you check into a hotel, so we would have our cards, we'd check in, meals, whatever, was, was, it was all taken care of. So now when we do this, it's all, for us, it's all reimbursement. Although, Mark, I think you didn't get your reimbursement.
I mailed it in, he said they could never find it, so, I never got it, never got reimbursed last year.
Yeah, and they, yeah. And so what happened was, there are some of us who no longer have access to the credit cards that were issued in our names for things like the conference, but there are some in the district who do have access.
So they canceled the board of education's credit cards and gave them to the chiefs, right? Is that accurate?
There are, there are some credit cards that have been, it wasn't just your guys that were canceled, but yeah, there were, you don't like the term toned down, but the majority of the credit cards were canceled. Do chiefs have credit cards? Yes.
So then say canceled, don't say toned down. I mean, that's a difference.
The board's usage of the credit card was so excessive that we had to tone it down, because I'm pretty sure we use it once a year.
Not about, I didn't say usage, it's the, the credit card numbers, the number of credit cards that were out there were cut back. Yes.
So you're going to be there early, right?
I will be there early, checking everybody in.
That's, what a brilliant plan that is.
And so how do we do the meals?
You pay for it and then submit for reimbursement, save your receipts, and submit them to my office, and I will get you, I'll make sure you're reimbursed.
Hand them to them, don't mail them to them.
Yeah.
And all board members are supposed to be so lucrative in their standing and their funding, that they can afford to just go down there and buy meals? Wonder if you're on a tight budget, like retired.
Good point.
Pack of lunch.
It's just, it's just unreasonable. I don't know, Josh.
Pack of lunch, man.
I'll just call you.
We can meet for lunch.
Yeah, wherever I go dinner, I'll just call you and say, "Josh, can you come pay this tab?"
And what we'll do is, we'll just, we'll go to restaurants and we'll just tell them that you're going to come in.
Let me know where you're going to be, I'll be there.
I just want to know where you're eating at, Josh.
That's fine.
This is serious. Should we make a common place where we all eat together?
We can, we can eat lunch together every day.
And we do that, for lunch, and then breakfast, and then dinner.
Like you said, it's just unreasonable.
In this conference, they don't have a luncheon that we all sit through, or a dinner that we all sit through?
They have certain, like, the, the extra lunches, receptions that you can go to, and they have lunches, but their additional costs be-
It's the meal and the mileage that would you have to submit for, meals and mileage.
Okay. So the food and the transportation, we have to pay for ourselves to get down there?
Yep. And submit reimbursement.
And to get back.
And there's one dinner that happens on Sunday evening, and it's with the... There is a...
Diversity or minority.
Yeah. Blah, 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 blah. Anyway, theirs is on that Sunday evening, but that's like, what is it, 80 bucks?
Something like that.
Maybe they're 50 to 80.
50, 80, something like that.
Depending on which one you're...
And again, that was one that we usually would pay for, but yeah. But you'd have to pay for it yourself.
Excuse me. I'm just going from here and here and here.
That's because I'm talking to us.
I'm just saying, I'm trying to follow the... You guys used to get credit cards.
Yeah, hold on. Hold on, no.
For one conference.
What I would suggest doing is, after our conversation, we got a second hearing in the public... I would suggest coming up to the mic and announcing yourself. It doesn't have to be.
I think... I think an interesting question would be, when some of the administrators recently took their trip to Texas, were those credit cards used by those people who got to go? Did they have to come back and get reimbursed, or did they have credit cards out?
There was credit cards that were out, but there were some people that did go on the trip then.
But some of them were able to use their corporate card for their event, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's interesting.
So there's like a bias discriminatory, like you get to, but you don't get to. And again, it can be... There can be policy that supports it, or there can just be arbitrary decisions made. And I think when there are just arbitrary decisions made, that...
Double standard.
That creates a... For all involved with it. For all involved. I mean, that's... I don't know. It just doesn't seem...
I feel another public records request coming.
See how those are coming along, huh? Yeah, it's getting pretty...
You've got an ESQ behind your name soon. You've done a lot of legal...
Hey, man, it's not hard. Just give me the information.
There's gonna be more outside ESQs making their requests, from what I understand.
Speaking of, I guess, under old business, I know Ms. Washington made a comment about the enrollment of the district, and I did get the enrollment information out of EMIS, so thank you for that. And I took... I emailed everybody, and as you could see, I broke down what was submitted to Ohio Department of Education for our enrollment for this district for the last three years, 2016, 2017, and 2018. And it appears as if the district has increased... I don't have it in front of me. I apologize. I was gonna bring it, but I forgot it. But it appears that we have almost, I think, 1,500 additional students from last year to this year. Not sure how that happens, but those are numbers coming straight off of Ohio Department of Education. So again, I don't know what the real numbers are or what all I can do is go off of.
We have a report going to Columbus that says we're plus 1,500. We've got reports from the administration ranging from plus this to minus this to minus this to minus this, the last three reports being increasing minus.
Correct.
Knowing that there's been these inquisitions the entire time, and we're reporting to the state, so what happens if the numbers are reporting to the state, that we've been suggesting this increase is inaccurate, and then it's determined that it's inaccurate? What happens?
Well, it's got a few different kind of repercussions of it. It can affect report card, because obviously if the student's not here and you're reporting on that student, you're not gonna have results. So it'll affect it that way. If you're showing higher numbers, then it'll affect financially, too, because obviously you're gonna get more funding based on those numbers. But as it's ultimately the last number... Well, I won't even say the last number. A number within time for the payments, the monthly foundation payments, to correct itself would be ultimately what... Financially, what it would be. So if you're seeing that, as the foundations come, the overall amount will adjust based on the number reported.
You seem less concerned about this than I would normally expect you to be, when we're reporting numbers that seemingly might not be accurate. And based on our discussions, these numbers... Do those numbers sound accurate to you, based on all the reports that you've seen and heard in terms of building population, that we are 1,500 over?
1,500 over, no. That never seemed accurate.
I took the numbers straight off of Ohio Department of Education's website that this district reported to them.
What was that effect?
For 2016, 2017, 2018. Between 2017 and 2018, again, don't quote me on the number, but it's somewhere around 1,500 additional kids, an increase in enrollment.
From fiscal year '17 to fiscal year '18? So the previous year to last year?
Whatever they have on ODE.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because if it's fiscal year '19, remember, there's always a two- to three-month lag on those numbers anyways.
18, '17 to '18.
If it's '17 to '18, the '18 number is probably accurate. So in...
So why is it so difficult for our district to report to us the number of students that we have? I mean, I'm just a little bit confused. We're looking at this number, that number, that number, that number.
And then it got real confusing, because then they get a second set of numbers of enrollment that included kids in what we refer to as an electronic building. Now, you did explain to me what the electronic building was, but at the end of the day, we shouldn't even be including those kids in any of our reports because they're not our kids, right? Those aren't our kids.
And they aren't being included in. That's what I confirmed when I sent it back to you. I confirmed it with Dawn, because I didn't understand what the... It's an EMIS thing. The electronic building is an EMIS thing, and it's basically a holding pot for anybody who is... And it wasn't open enrollment, because I think I initially said to you it was open enrollment. When I looked back at it, it wasn't open enrollment. It was charter. So anything, community school, this... It's reported within this electronic building within EMIS. They're not counted into the enrollment number, but that's how EMIS tracks them as being at a community school.
I just find it amazing that we don't know how many kids we have. And why do I say that? Because if I ask the question, "How many kids do we have?", no one tells me how many kids we have.
We've never had this much problem trying to figure that out. That's easy.
If any of you ask how many kids we have, guess what I can tell you?
Couldn't tell you.
How do we not... How do we... That just seems inexplicable. How do we not know how many kids we have?
I can understand that, and that the number of kids are very fluid. They're in, they're out, they're...
It does, but not by 1,500.
Listen, in, out, and we can say...
But not that amount.
When your money is determined on enrollment, when your graduation rate is determined on enrollment, when all of your assessment is determined on enrollment, guess what you know? If I go to Avon Lake, if I go to... I can go to a lot of places, and I'll bet if we ask how many students they have...
They know. But you should have stopped with the one word, "money", and we would understand.
I just don't...
To say money. That's what it's about. That's how you use your money.
It equals a certain amount of money, right?
That's right. You get your money by a certain number of students that you have enrolled.
We get paid, what, $6,500 per pupil?
$6,050.
$6,050.
$6,050.
If you're off by 200, it's 1.2 million.
Yes.
Okay. So if we... You're saying it's 1.2 million?
If the number was say off by 200, it would be $1.2 million.
By 200.
So what he's saying is, if we lost 200 students?
Every 100 students is $600,000.
$1.2 million the district loses.
Yes.
So that's one of the important reasons to know.
That's right. It's just...
But I will...
Stop the conversation and say it's about the money.
I will say this, that I heard, and I'm certainly not gonna say where I heard it from, but a specific parent had a meeting with the CEO, and he clearly stated to that parent that he's not worried about a levy. He doesn't think they need it. I find that interesting. Extremely interesting. Just thought I'd throw that out there. Pretty arrogant, especially if you're losing 200, 300 students. It's amazing. Amazing.
Anyway, I guess we don't ask how many students we have in our district.
Yeah. I don't know. I just want to know a number. Just give me a number.
For my purposes, I get the enrollment from two places. I get it from the calculation from the foundation, which is never current.
It's always fluid.
Well, it's not even about being fluid. For that one, it takes some time to catch up.
Right.
So the initial reporting of enrollment, it just recently, in the second payment in October, finally adjusted. So their projection will... You know, you'll see a slight tweak here and there, but then you'll see a big...
Right.
You'll see those big swings, you know, when it finally catches up, basically. And then the other one is, I contact Dawn and ask her what she's showing for enrollment. Beyond that, I mean, short of me walking building to building and counting them myself, I'd...
Right. We expected in the first number of weeks, or months, then we also expect, because of the transancy of the district, for that thing to move, just like a building. Of course. You know, kids move from building to building, out of the district, in the district. But we've never even really been given... We can't even get a concrete baseline where we started yet. I mean, it's... Every number is reported this, then reported that, and then reported that. I mean, it's... And it's just, I don't know how to... Yeah. Thanks for the look.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We got it.
Yes.
All right. Anything else for the order on their old business?
Horse is pretty much...
Yeah. Beat. Just beat. Reporting recommendations of the treasurer.
I didn't even want to go to this topic with you.
You sure?
How you doing, Josh?
Challenge of those very numbers we just talked about.
I'll tell you this, I'm having a fabulous birthday.
It's your birthday today?
Happy birthday.
Okay. Well...
Let me greet you with another public records request. Happy birthday to you.
Well, congratulations on another one. Yeah.
Thank you. What I have for you this evening is the five-year forecast, and to go through it with you, kind of line by line, I do have it projected up there. I realize it's pretty small, but in order to fit it all on there, that's about as big as I could take it. So when we get further down the forecast, I'll scroll down so the audience can see. And we do have extra copies, if you would like a copy.
Copies are smaller than that, so...
They really are.
The copy to go along with this, you know, to help you see that.
Man, I should have brought my glasses today, huh?
You see how small it is?
I thought about going to get mine down there.
I'll forward the electronic app to you guys, too.
You wanna take a recess and go get your glasses?
Nah. It's based on numbers that don't exist anyway. No disrespect.
You want to go over the key assumptions first?
The key word is forecast.
Correct.
All right.
Kind of like, hopefully it's more accurate than the weather.
Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you.
We're messing with you today, Jeff.
Yeah. Happy birthday.
Thank you. I'll go line by line. A lot of the revenue, like I have in the past, it's for the October, it's basically, it's gonna be based on pretty much what happened last year. We do have, you know, there are some assumptions that I will assume, but will not put in here just due to the fact, like we did for... We started at line 1.01. We did have a... I did have a meeting with the county auditor for reappraisal, and we are expected to see some growth within the reappraisal of the property within the district. And we were actually within the top three of growth of what they're projecting we should receive revenue-wise. But you guys know how I am. I'm not gonna put a dollar in that until I physically see it. So for that property tax line, I did, which, in my opinion, last year was a low year anyways, I did that and then did the typical reduction of about $100,000 each year, just to plan for kind of worst-case scenario. But I do fully expect, from what I'm hearing, for that number to increase this year. The other part of this is, just like line 1.02, which is directly correlated with line 1.01, and line 1.05, those are all directly correlated because of the fact of your property tax allocation, that is going to be the state reimbursement portion of the top line. So we get the .875 is what taxpayers physically pay, and then you have the reimbursable part for the hold harmless that the state reimburses us for. Those three lines, the C... You see the drastic decreases year over year as the forecast goes on, and that has to do with removing the renewal levies. So you have your emergency coming up in January of next year. It's removed from this line, added back in at the line at the lower part that I will get to in a bit. And then we also have the three... The three general purpose that are coming up, half a year in 2021 and a full year in 2022, and that's why you see it just continue to drop off, because I gotta renew them, assuming non-passage, and add them back in at the bottom. So then, the next line then would be that unrestricted state grants and aid. This is our foundation payments. Based on the biennium budget, we did see an increase, and you see that first part of that increase from '17 to '18, and that was about 2.5 million, a little bit over 2.5 million between the increase in that line and also the restricted grants and aid, which is your career tech funded and your economic funded. So those two lines comprise that increase, so it's about 2.5. Based on how the foundation payments are coming in currently, initially, we were told we should get around 2.5, 2.6. The initial foundation payments are showing us right around $2 million increase, almost 2.1 million. I would probably expect that number to increase, but I'm always gonna lean on what the reporting is at this point. So the other... Let's see. So we have a projected increase from '18 to '19 of $420,000 in the restricted line. That's where you see that jump in the restricted. But that's the combination of the two of those is where you get that... The roughly, you know, $2 million increase, 2.1. The other line item, in a different mindset of looking at it, is... So we always had the increase in the all of the revenues, which is the 1.06. That increase was due typically to interest earnings, and my philosophy, different from how Dale was, that Dale didn't do a lot of investment. I took the investment in that line from $8,000 a year to $119,000, and that's in 2017, $119, and then in 2018, we had $346,000 in interest earnings. What I did differently in this is, normally, I would flatline that number, assuming that we would get it. I went through and then directly tied that number to our bottom line cash. So you do see a decrease in that interest earnings, because obviously, we can't earn interest on money that we don't have. So I tied that back, so it's a more accurate number.[1575.91] and then directly tied that number to our bottom line cash, so you do see a decrease in that interest earnings, because obviously we can't earn interest on money that we don't have. So I tied that back, so it's a more accurate number. So as if you look back at May, you don't see the drastic decrease in that based on whatever the bottom line is. So, and then, the only other part then of revenue, you have your advances in line, this is determined at the beginning of the year, this is how much is advanced back in based on the advance out to make athletics and grant funding whole. So if you have a grant that you're waiting to receive monies from the state for, for reimbursement, because you spend it, you send reports over, the state then reimburses you for grants. If there's something that crosses over that fiscal year, the general fund will make it, so you're not carrying over a zero, or a negative balance, it zeros it out, and then you have that advances in line back into the general fund to, once you receive those funds from the state.
Are we typically getting 100% reimbursement?
For grants?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, all they do is, because we have the specific grant codes that are set up, and we spend money out of that, and our, our grant area, Rachel Tansey, is very good at making sure what the money is spent on, that's allowable ahead of time. So whatever is specifically in those line items, it's just a matter of receiving the money back when we submit them. So, that's the revenue portion, and I'll scroll up so we can get, see a little more of the expenditures, but while I'm doing this, is there questions on the revenue side of things?
So you said the revenue expectation increased with the property values?
I didn't show an increase in here, but we could.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
Yeah.
Because I know some of those are still able to be, folks are challenging those, because.
Yes.
There have been quite a few inaccuracies or whatever.
And there's a lot of that. You can't predict collection percent, and you can't predict those increases, and I do know the majority, I mean, we, on a weekly basis, probably get.
Requests for?
Yeah, those decreases, basically. And when we look at those things, obviously, they give us the option to challenge, and we never challenge home values. That's not something the district has ever even looked into, ever done. It's just not something we would do. We leave it up to the auditor, basically, if they look into something, and they feel that the home should increase or decrease, and then they go through the property value things. We do have Mr. Giardini that handles those for us, but we normally don't challenge, like, personal homes.
Then we have a different, folks handling all of those texts?
Yeah, we had a different, we had a different person before.
We did. And actually, we were talking with Mr. Giardini, he was able to save us quite a bit of money to let him handle it.
Was it Konzer?
It was Konzer prior, yes.
Konzer?
It was actually costing us a lot of money to use him.
It was insane.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because he was giving, he was charging us on a per basis, like, per, per court basis, per case. Mr. Giardini was able to charge us a flat fee per month to look into all the cases. So it saved us quite a bit of money.
Okay, so, in that regard, now that was something, again, and I know there's these pieces where they're board-related, non-board-related.
Mm-hmm.
That's an area that still is board-related.
Correct.
So.
Tax revenue.
Normally, we would get, like, a listing. We would get listing of the requests for, because sometimes we have some weird requests. Do we still get that?
That was a Konzer report, and it's, I could request it from Giardini. I don't normally, you know, I've trusted that, especially with the home values, I've trusted kind of his evaluations. He'll send me things and say, I wouldn't recommend, or I would recommend, and I lean on his expertise. I could request the same report.
Yeah, because I think we were the same way with the recommendations. I just, it's, there's a recommendation, but then there is the body that would either accept or deny the recommendation. And statute-wise, that's, because that's a tax valuation, that might be, I don't know how the, usually we would have to, to actually take action on those. Because we have, I remember, was it, remember the Boys and Girls Club when Tony, and it was dealing with the building in Oakwood?
Yeah.
Those still come in front of you guys. Those things don't change. That never came from Konzer. What, the report that Konzer would give me was his basically justifying his cost, that I saved you such and such value, which equals out to blank taxes. So it was him justifying the cost.
Okay.
Those things still come in front of you. Like, if it's, if it's more than the typical abatement amount, which I just gave Tony one, I mean, we, those still come in front of you.
That's what I was wondering, do they still?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the process is still, Mr. Giardini would, if he gets something like that, he then comes and will talk to the board, and then we make the decision whether we want to respect it and approve it, and.
Yes.
Or we want to challenge it.
I know generally, yeah, with, especially when you have to ask people for levy money, you really don't want to.
I got a question on the federal grants, on 1.045. It says restricted federal grants and aid. Are the deans paid out of, are the deans paid out of Title I money?
They are, and I'll get down to, that's more in the expenditure, so if you want to move down to there, I can explain it. The, so the expenditure, and the big differential in the past, and you'll see that the lower amounts here, we moved to a school-wide pooling, which takes general fund instructional dollars and Title I funds, and lumps them into a pool. And you budget based on that pool, so you're not budgeting based on a grant dollar amount. In the past, and it's, this has been my mindset since I came on board, of the idea of, like, zero-based budget-type model, of, let's budget based on needs and not on dollar amounts. It's not the, I've always had $200,000 last year, you know, I need that dollar amount. It's, well, tell me what you want to spend, and we'll, we'll see. So, this, this allows us to be more proactive with the budgeting, because it's taking where the grant funds, you know, it's kind of the idea with grant funds in the past was, use it or lose it. So we were awarded 450,000, we got to do whatever we can to spend that 450,000, and even to the points where maybe it didn't necessarily directly align to whatever we were doing instructionally, it was, don't lose those grant dollars. Because not only if you didn't spend it fully, you, you were, you're allowed a certain amount of carryover, and beyond that carryover, you weren't getting, you were basically losing those dollars for the year. And then, for the next year, they would value, you know, basically what you spent them on.
I just thought, I didn't know that you could take, take Title I and roll it in to something like that, because I thought it had, it had restrictions on it as to what you could do.
There are restrictions.
There isn't many restrictions on our general fund money.
And there's only a certain percentage you can use on administration?
There are, when you rolled those dollars in, it actually, it's more restrictive, your general fund is basically, you're restricting it to instructional and the guidelines of title. So you still, like, you know, when there's, like, the bidding, where you got to get so many quotes, when it comes to Title I, all those things, all those guidelines still flow over into the pool. But what it does then is allow us to say, we have, you know, combining the two, we have blank dollar amount to spend on this instructional area, we have blank dollar amount to spend on instructional software, we have this blank dollar amount to spend on textbooks, or instructional textbooks. It takes you and has, it makes you have to focus your instructional dollars. So it actually, it's, instead of being that reactionary of, you know, the state, when we finally get the substantially approved amount, and here's your grant money for the year, and you're constantly just trying to spend on that money, this allows you to actually factor it into the budget, how you would budget general fund previously. It allows you to factor that into that dollar amount and spend it more direct. So, and you do see, what the difference is then for the forecast, meaning the forecast just reports general fund dollars, it's removing them from these lines here, and what it becomes then is, that transfers out, if you see line 5.01, that it goes, you're transferring it into the 598, which is a school-wide pooling fund then, and that's where all of them come together. With those, we have to do all the typical grant reporting. You have to do PCRs to request the funds, you know, the percentage based on the title funds. You have to do FERs the same way, and what you're doing is then tracking funds based on a percentage. So, so, yeah, that being said, everybody instructional-wise is included within that pool. You have staff, that's instruction, and the only ones that obviously won't, wouldn't be considered, it's basically if you look at your certified staff versus your non-certified, your certified's in the pool, your non-certified would not be. So all that's remaining here would be your non-instructional staff. And that's, I projected the same when it came down to it. The, it's pretty even when it comes to salaries and benefits, and it's pretty clear-cut, instructional versus non-instructional. When it comes to, like, purchase service, supply and materials, those lines, there are a portion that's, you see it more in the supply line, there's a smaller portion in purchase services that's pulled out and into that transfer amount. But they are, they flow into, what you get kind of tricky on is whether you want to include kind of your, more your catastrophic cost-type things, like your, if you have, you know, special ed funding and things like that, where it might be like a specific student, that is a large dollar amount, or you have a specific class. This, what this does is evenly distribute it across the district. So if we say we want to put $40,000 into classroom supplies, it'll take that, and based on student counts in each one of the buildings, and evenly distribute it across the district. So it'll say, each student gets, whatever, $15. It'll allocate that out based on the overall amount divided down, and then kick it to the buildings. And actually, we have a building-level budget now, to where the buildings have access, to where you can actually, you're, you're more accurately reporting needs, so they can spend their money on what they feel their building needs are. So if there's specific software that they see works better in their building, they have access to buy that software for that specific building. And you do see variance.
Which is easier now, since they have credit cards?
The buildings do not have credit cards.
No, you don't.
You mentioned the auditor. Going back to the fiscal, the levy, you have to see the auditor, what, in like, January, a month ahead, or sometime in that?
And for what?
For the levy. If you want to get it.
January is when I would have to come to you for the first time in order to get it on for the first election next year.
For next year?
Yes. There's three elections next year, and you have to do them, you have to have it submitted 90 days before the election date. And so we have to have two meetings prior to that to do the, giving me the authority to request the evaluation on the levy, and then you have to go, come back and basically then request of you guys approving for me to place it on the ballot. So there's two, two, two pieces of things you have to vote on.
Well, and where, how would that affect your expenditures then, if the levy did pass?
Not at all, that feels yours.
Well, the expenditures are not, the expenditures.
For 2019?
In the revenue lines, there showed up there, I had to remove them out. Expenditures, obviously, the bottom line, you can see, when you get down to the very bottom, 2021 is where we're showing the first deficit.
2021.
Yeah. It was one, and on the very line, 15.01.
I see it.
Now, if you follow it all the way over to where it goes negative, that's the first time that we would officially go negative, if we continue spending the way we are, and revenue continues to track this way.
Okay, and we don't, or do get the levy? Are you talking about?
The levy is removed up here. So if you, you want to know how it affects us, how fast we go negative, if you look at the line 10.01, that is not considering. Basically, you're looking at that, and that's like if the levy didn't pass. That's how, that's how much it would affect us negatively.
Okay.
That, and I mentioned it earlier, that line 11.01 and 11.02, that's factoring the levy back in if it was to pass, and then that would show the negative effectively if we continued to receive those funds.
Okay.
And I noticed you used an enrollment of 7140?
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's a number.
That's the number I requested as of the day I did it from Dawn.
7140.
We're, we're using enrollment number of 7140?
7140. Is there enrollment number that this forecast?
For this report?
Oh, no, actually, this number is not from Dawn. This number is from, when I pulled the foundation report, I used it, so it's directly, so based on the number that's in here for the foundation amount, I wanted, I always reflect that to this. This is whatever's being reported, because that's how current dollar amounts that they're projecting is based on that number. So.
7,000.
140.
140 students.
140.
When's the last time we had that many students?
It's been a while.
Okay, so, yeah.
I'm just telling you.
Well, but if you look back, these are the counts that I have, and they're not, you don't see major swings. Those are the counts according to the state, how we finished. So even back to 16, it showed us having 7,021. So.
Okay.
All right.
It gets a little scary.
What's that?
It's a little scary.
But I see with the levy, if it doesn't pass, it takes, what, two to three years before it really shows up in the negative?
Well, yeah, because we're carrying over, you're going to have, like, the discussion at the end of the year where our cash balance was better by 5 million. You're carrying that cash balance over, and we don't, if you look at line 7.01, that's your cash balance. And then you see, 6.01 is your excess spending, so that's your, your revenue less expenditures, and you see we first start going negative this year. So we negatively spend, according to this, 3.5 million. That's when we first start dipping into that cash balance of 20,907. When you consider that, then, our cash balance after that is the 17.4 million. And that's how it all carries over. So it's, it's all, you know, it's basically that giant formula of revenues less expenditures equals that cash balance.
Right, yes, yep.
But what, what happens in 2023?
In regards to what?
Oh, the negative cash flow.
45 million in the hole.
Yeah.
You're going to find a lot of money.
Or 58.7, if the levy doesn't, if none of the levies are ever.
And that's also the expectation of new money.
You're talking about $45 million.
Yeah.
If the levy doesn't pass.
Basically, the debt compounds. So if you're continuing to, if you're losing money and your expenditures are continuing to grow, which is what I always project on here, you got to remember, this is always worst-case scenario too.
Yes.
So this doesn't factor in. The last biennium budget, the final year is this year. So as soon as, we'll probably start hearing, I would hope by the, the May forecast, that I have an idea of what the biennium budget increase will be. But we've been averaging roughly $2.4 million a year increase in the state funding. So none of that's considered in here, because it's an unknown. So I flatlined that, that revenue.
Okay.
I always look at this and assume worst-case scenario. So like, I have a 10% increase on our benefits, they've been averaging closer to 4% to 5%. The other thing with, to consider here is, when we moved over to the health insurance to the consortium, when I moved us last.
Good move.
Thank you. When I moved us, that is considering that we were locked in for a year and a half at our current rates. We will have, next July 1st, we will have an increase. Or, I assume an increase. They've been averaging about a 4% increase on that. And then the other thing that's assumed is, when we're doing these benefits, is that we are currently funding to get into that consortium pool, and that's, the rates are impacted by that additional funding to get into the pool. Once that ends, and they roughly quoted us about three years for us to be fully funded, it could be sooner, depending on how, how well our claims come in. So if those claims come in better, we could be funded sooner, and we can actually see, realize that rate dropped considerably, because we're not funding the pool. So there's, there's that aspect of it, and that is, that is factored in here, that we will, the absolute latest is three years. At that three-year mark, I did adjust the benefits down accordingly.
Okay. So the future looks bad for Lorraine, but good for Teach for America.
Any questions on my forecast?
No, yeah, so, if, if our enrollment was more like 6,300, that means we have changed ourselves, if $200,000 equals, 200 students equals $1 million.
1.2, 600,000. Or 200 students equals, yeah, it's about 600,000 a year.
So 1,000 students is, because our, our report card from.
6 million?
$6 million.
Our report card, this recent one, has the district at 6,000.
6214, that was on our, that was on our report card, that was in our demographics.
Can you say E-CAP?
So how does that square? If we have our report card, because this is, I mean, thinking about graduation rates and everything.
It doesn't square.
Yeah.
If we take that kind of a hit, we can't. I mean, and keep in mind, I always increase open enrollment, I always have that hedge in there of that 1.5 million, assuming open enrollment in community schools would always increase. That was back as far as when Dale did it, me and him always.
30-some percent of our kids are openly, are not here.
Correct.
They're at other schools.
Correct. Well, so, yeah, considering one-third of our kids go to open enrollment or community schools, that's factored in there, plus that number growing. So I always put roughly a hedge of 1.5 million a year and compound that, so it goes 1.5, 3 million, 4.5, based on that increased loss. So that would absorb some of it, but no, if we had a $6 million swing in that, that would be, it'd be tough to, to sustain, for sure.
These aren't our numbers. These, these are what came with the state report card on the demographic side.
And our numbers were showing significantly better on the previous foundations, so I have seen some adjustment in that the foundation numbers reported, because we did take a hit on open enrollment numbers adjusted down. So we lost some open enrollment, or the open enrollment out increased.
Yeah.
So, I am seeing some movement in that. Like I said, it was, we finally saw it, and I was very, I sat on the numbers for that. That was the only thing that was really holding up the forecast, because I wanted to see where that second October payment came in, because usually that's where you see it finally adjust.
Because people are starting to fill us.
Yes, so.
For claiming.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
And I did, within the assumptions, right before the expenditure start, there is a little bit more detail on school-wide pooling, the benefits of it, just kind of some background on it. It has been an initiative that's been pushed out by the state, because it allows you to plan better. But I will tell you, it, it wasn't easy setting up. So, my staff, staff was not very happy with me about it. What'd you say?
I just want to know that it's legal. I mean, the federal, the federal funding, I just.
Oh, school-wide, it is. And actually, the, actually, the state would prefer you to go to school-wide pooling, because then they know you're more accurately budgeting your money. So.
I, I know that, when you, you keep saying state, and I keep saying federal.
Well, it's federal funds, but yeah, the state is the one that manages the distribution of it.
Yeah, there's a major difference.
Yeah.
The state has the distribution of the federal funds.
Correct.
Correct.
I just remember us paying some back.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Because you illegally expended it, expended it out.
Spent it.
On, uh.
We walked them computers, yeah, they worked the deal.
Yep. There was that end oven, there was also the.
Professional development.
Professional, there's been professional development. There was also using career tech funds on early college.
Yeah, that was a big one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that.
Ding, ding, ding.
That was, uh.
And it's always, I mean, it's not that people are malicious, it's trying to be creative and get things that you don't have the money for, but you need.
Exactly.
Um, yeah. It works great until.
Mm-hmm.
It does. And then that comes out of the general fund.
Yeah.
Okay, any new business? I did get some information on the, my request for the parent new addition to this wonderful brand-new building. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Hawks, for that as well. But, real simple, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time doing it. What's the purpose of this addition?
It's, it's similar to where you guys initially requested to expand. It's the idea of space, like, for board meetings, things like that.
Board meeting, professional development, and then expanding the atrium, so that you don't have to.
They're not going to expand the atrium. Well, they'll extend it to, to accommodate the door, but it's not nearly as, like, the extension that we were looking at previously.
So it's not going over to the other building?
To, no, no. It's not going to come all the way out to the front, you're saying to the front of the board office?
No, I'm saying it, I'm saying where that wall goes out on, on, and I thought, that way you're just building one wall. Okay? You're just building one wall.
It is, it's going to be a physical standalone building with a door that exits out. The atrium is extended somewhat, but not to the level of.
Well, no, it would never went any farther than the other building than, than, than the administration building. You know, when you stand in the atrium and you look, you look west, you can see the, the administration building.
Yes.
I mean, we thought that it should have went to that building, because.
So that whole back little.
It really doesn't have enough room to do anything. If you, if you, if you have, have an event, and then you have a halftime or something, they're not going to take 800 people and put them in that space.
Well, you can't even exit.
It's expansive. It's expanding the atrium. I don't know to the level of how far, I know it's not coming out past whatever that room would be, which I don't think it was anyway.
The designs that Jeff Austin presented to us was way more elaborate than we expected, yeah. And it is like, he brings this cost out of like some millions and millions.
It was, yeah, 1.2 million or 1.4 million or something.
It's like, let's not build what the architects want to build, let's build what we need. Who knows how much he took on them buildings, these buildings?
What's the projected cost? Do we know?
We know where it wants to come in. It, we put out a bid and the numbers were coming in significantly higher. So they, they're rebidding it and it's gonna, gonna do, I think they're opening it this Thursday.
Where were they coming in at?
This comes to that point to where I don't know if I should say it publicly, because I don't want it to affect the bidding process. You know what I mean?
It's, but again, that bidding process has been trash, it's over.
Yeah, it's over.
You just, you just said that there's a-
But he's gonna rebid.
Where were they, they were coming in around like 750, 800, which was significantly higher than where we were hoping.
800 million?
No, 800,000, 750, 800,000, not 800 million. It's a whole new school.
Wondering what this one was.
Yeah.
Okay. Any committee reports, requests from board members?
Yes, I have a request. Considering the atmosphere and the environment that we have, I would like to make sure that we have a security person that's at the board meeting or floating somewhere near. And I don't think that's impractical.
Can you please pose that to Mr. Hawks?
I will.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to say that we have 45 scholars who are recognized as member of the 21 and over club for their scores on the ACT exams. By scoring 21 or higher, these scholars have placed themselves in the national average among test takers across the entire United States. And they had that in the Lorraine Journal, and I was so happy to see that instead of everything about safety and our lack thereof.
And one perfect.
And one that is right, and one that was perfect. Her name is Carissa Holcomb. She scored 34, placing her at the 1% of test takers.
That's not perfect.
That was a 36.
There's a 36.
Is the gentleman's a 36.
And Trent Jackson achieved a rare perfect score of 36.
36.
I thought, I thought the real statistic that came out in there was two of those that were in there were in seventh and eighth grade.
Yes.
That's remarkable.
That is the remarkable part.
I think scoring in your, in the mid-20s on an ACT in the seventh and eighth grade is, is pretty awesome. I really think that 36 we should bring to our next board meeting and honor him here.
And that was Devin Penny and Don DeWilson. They both tested as eighth graders and achieved 23 and 24 respectively.
Put the request in.
I can request.
All right.
I got a 21 last year.
Yeah, thank you.
21 since you turned 21.
I didn't say, I didn't say what it was on. I didn't say, I said I got a 21.
Second meeting of the public.
Second hearing of the public.
Oh, no.
I just want to get the credit card thing. You, I, I'm totally confused.
We'll tell you afterwards.
Okay, all right.
Did we answer her question?
Don't tell her afterwards.
Oh, Jesus, help us God. Yes, your friend.
We'll put it on the record?
If you want to be on the record, come on up.
I didn't go and answer it up here.
You guys used to have credit cards, is that what you're saying? Everybody on the board had a credit card?
Yes, we did.
With your name on it? And he took it away. Everybody on the board. He took it away? Is that what you're saying?
Ask the treasurer that question.
I apologize, what was it? I was trying to help her.
You can continue helping her. I just want to, the board had a credit card, every board member had a credit card with their personal name on it.
Correct. It said, it said Lorraine City Schools and their name, so they were the authorized users.
So when they go to conference, they just say, they whip out their credit card?
Correct.
So now that, now they don't have a, he took the credit cards away from them. So now that if they're going to this meeting that they plan on going to, but everything is paid for except for the food and all of that?
Transportation.
Right, so now they have to whip out their own credit card and pay for it and wait for the check to come?
Then they would have to submit afterwards for reimbursement.
The hotel's not paid for either.
The ho-
The hotel, well.
It's not.
I'm putting it on my credit card, but yeah.
Right, so you can't check into a room without a credit card?
I go, I go hotel to hotel and check them all in, and then they show up and show their ID and get the room key. But yeah, I'm the one that's-
Oh, everybody's at a-
All their rooms, all their rooms are on my credit card basically.
Yeah, but you have to go to 78 hotels for everybody?
Three, but yeah.
Why isn't anybody, how come you guys made us stay in the same hotel? Never mind, but anyway, that's okay. I just wanted to know.
If they could all stay in the same hotel and close, I would have, that would have been ideal. But the problem is, the way that, the way it works is, we got, there's like a time that you gotta log in and you're competing to get rooms.
All right, okay.
And yeah, so that's, you don't always get-
At least they're gonna get their money back, right? That's what I'm concerned about. And other people-
If I receive the reimbursement.
I understand. I feel your pain. I've been through the reimbursement stage, okay? So I had to put it on my credit card and it took them six months to reimburse me. So I, I feel your pain.
I, I will, because of the fact that if I, if I get it in my hand, I will definitely do it. I never saw your reimbursement, honestly. I'm not sure where it went or what, but-
Now, who are the upper people that have the credit cards now?
All the chiefs have credit cards.
The chief of who? Chief like what? Chief of-
He said all the chiefs.
Yeah, all the chiefs. Chief of schools, chief of, chief operations, chief family, myself.
All the new administrators here.
All the new chiefs got credit cards?
Yes.
Why do they get credit cards?
I, I don't make that determination.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to know why the chiefs got it, that's all.
And Josh will be putting tape on your doors to make sure you don't break curfew either.
Well, I want, excuse me, I just wanted to say to Josh, I will hunt you down so that I could eat during this conference.
You tell me where you want to eat lunch every day and I'll meet you there.
Okay, thank you.
So, looking at this forecast, we do, we could use the $3.1 million.
Of course. You'll never hear me say that we can't use fund. There's, there is no school, probably within the country, that could afford to lose funding.
My other question is, the town hall meeting for this month, I guess they're usually on the second Thursday, but last month they were changed. There was a bunch of things going on, conferences here, we had a varsity football game. So I inquired about the meeting for this month, and for some reason, it's on the 19th, the same day and time as our next board, school board meeting. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
Somebody's aware, somebody holds a calendar for the district.
My last question is regarding the Airmark contract. There was some discussion at a PTO meeting for the, for the high school that the principals only get a certain amount of monies to use for incentives. And I think it was the ninth and 10th grade used some of that cash to purchase ice cream for, I think it was perfect attendance or something. And they were saying that we can't buy outside food that's a lot cheaper.
That, that's not just Airmark. You can't have ice cream within the day because of nutritional guidelines through the state. So the funding can, we can lose funding based on that because of the strict nutritional guidelines through the state.
Okay.
So that's one part of it. Yes, there is-
They have a competitive.
There is a competitive part to the Airmark agreement that, yeah, that you have to go through them first. That's not to say you can't purchase outside of that agreement, but you have to prove that they weren't the cheaper alternative.
Do we have to prove, do we have to do something in order to even let our kids sell candy at one stage?
You can't sell candy during the day.
Now you should sell candy for your sports stuff.
Not during the school day, not an hour. It's an hour before and an hour after, you can't sell.
So they're not allowed to, to-
It's a non-compete clause with Airmark.
Okay, but, but you're also saying that they're not allowed to use food for incentives?
No, they can use, they can use it for incentives, but it would have to follow the guidelines. So the nutritional guidelines, there's two parts to it basically. There's the nutritional guidelines through the state that you can't go outside of those guidelines to use as incentives. So ice cream obviously would not be, be one because of the, you know, it's basically, any kind of sweet is disallowed.
Strike that from the record.
Unless it was attached to an education lesson.
Correct. It's, it's an instructional incentive. It would have to be an instructional incentive.
If you're using food as an incentive and it's funding that comes through Ohio Department of Education, you actually have to have it included in some kind of educational lesson.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's strict, strict guidelines on, on how you use that even, even then. So there are other parts to that though, that they do have student activity money, which is '18, like fundraising money. They can do those kind of fun events, but again, it would have to be one hour before or one hour after the school day. It can't be done within the school day. So if you wanted to have like an ice cream social an hour after school, or have some, some kind of like fun fall event, which I think some of the elementaries did, you could do those types of things, but you couldn't use federal funding in order to do that.
And is this also the same reason some parents were asking about like birthdays, they're not allowed to bring cupcakes and all of that? So this ties into all of that, okay. All right, thank you.
Because of the nutritional guidelines.
Are you kidding me? That's ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
I don't make the nutritional guidelines, I agree.
But, but, but the people who lobby, like the dairy industry?
Yeah.
And those who decide how much of that little plate that they get?
Right.
Hardcore money.
Anyway. Our next school board meeting will be held November 19th, 2018 at 5 o'clock, same place, right here.
Same bad time, same bad channel.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
November 19th, and we can give a nice report on what happened down there in Columbus.
Discussion.
You want to know what happened, you better come. You may want to come.
Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Demakia.
No.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.